City Manager commented.
Yeah, he was having one conversation.
Yeah, I don't know what happened.
Oh, I think it was just time.
Oh, is that what it was? Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Council members Costin.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Do we have a council member requesting to appear remotely?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember Nelson.
Motion to approve, Councilmember Nelson being remote.
Second.
Any council discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Costin.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item four is business, four A is citizens' input time. A maximum of sixty minutes is set for input of citizens or matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. Anyone wishing to participate in citizens' input, please use the podium to my left.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Hernandez, Derek Frazier, District Five. I'd like to address an ordinance that was on the agenda last week, ninety-five dash twenty-one, the land change on Pine Island Road, the twenty-five hundred southwest Pine Island Road. The applicant withdrew the request. This was an Amazon entity, and from the information that I've gathered, there was a number of the Sandoval residents who were concerned about the increased traffic on Pine Island Road. It took us years and years to get Pine Island Road four lane. Councilmember Tate, I'm sure you're aware of what we went through. Our city representative, our state representative Gary Abishan, was most beneficial in this. We've got it made, we've got our commercial corridor. When Sandoval was being developed, they started down off Trafalgar, Surfside, and Veterans Parkway. And I was told back in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, when I was in the city working as a structural inspector, that they were going to go all the way to Pine Island Road. I said, no way. Well, there they are. And now they're complaining that there's liable to be increased traffic that would impede their access to their project. They have an access off Veterans Parkway on the south, they have access off Surfside Boulevard to the east, they have a second access off the end of Trafalgar Parkway that they bribed the city into opening them by furnishing the city with the utilities to multi-sport, a number of entities, BMX Park, it was a good thing for the city, they've got three accesses. Now they have a fourth access on Pine Island Road. There's a five-building, four-story apartment complex going up on Pine Island Road. Farmer Joe's, who I've been driving by, they're not going to make it by December, folks, I got news for you, right there by Aldi's. And you have the new Fossil Memorial coming up down there just to the east of Nicholas. The city has been looking for this type of development for, not years, decades. This is exactly what the city needs. I would like to have City Council to direct the city manager to have his economic development team chase these people down and offer them incentives. You did it to Mikado, Mikado's, and he might be controversial, neither here nor there. Is that my time?
Just trying to wrap it up quickly.
I would like this to be pursued, and as far as a few dozen people in Sandoval complaining about that, just a point of reference here, I built my house seven blocks south of Pine Island Road, right off of Skyline thirty-two years ago. There was nothing north of Iskaya Parkway. My first commercial entity coming up anywhere was Billy Bob's Car Wash. That was it. But the city needs this tax base, and Mr. Hernandez needs to have his economic development team pursue these people. My only suggestion is that the City Council request the State Department of Transportation close the access to Sandoval off of Pine Island Road, and their problem is gone. Thank you for listening to me, I appreciate your time, and I really, really hope we pursue this because that's commercial tax dollars, that's not forty-year residential tax dollars.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on citizens' input?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Richard Aiken, I'm an attorney with Henderson Franklin here in Fort Myers, or over in Fort Myers, I should say. I'm here this afternoon, we represent the developer of the Hudson Creek project, which is going to be mentioned and is in the PowerPoint presentation about the utility expansion projects. I just wanted to take this opportunity to say that we have been working with staff. Carl Barocco, who's the engineer on the project, is also here with me today. We've had numerous meetings, we've gone back a number of times, recently had a meeting with the Attorney's Office, Utility Department, Finance Director, and some others about an off-site utility agreement to work on getting utilities to the Hudson Creek project. And on behalf of the developer, they're ready to go, we're just waiting on and trying to finalize a few additional pieces of that agreement to get that finalized. So just wanted to make that comment, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to quickly introduce myself. My name is Kurt from Highview Commercial, and we too are interested in the utilities getting up to Kismet and Old Burnt Store Road. We have a parcel under contract now, it's seventeen acres, and we are interested in developing that in the future. Just want to put that on the record.
And your last name, sir?
Skurdotto.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on citizens' input, please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Any council discussion on citizens' input? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item four B, the two thousand and twenty-one comprehensive utility master plan update. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, members of public, good afternoon. Probably the biggest issue that this community has been dealing with for the last twenty-five years or so, and certainly will continue to deal with over the next twenty-five years, is the expansion of water, sewer, and reuse water throughout the entire city. We have seen that once these utilities go in, it helps spark both residential and commercial development in certain areas. And plus, it is good public policy with respect to minimizing our harmful effects on the environment. So today, Mr. Mayor, what we want to do is talk to you about the next twenty-five-year plan for expanding infrastructure throughout the city. So today, you're going to hear from Jeff Pearson and other city staff members as appropriate, and also the city's consultant that was hired to help us develop this master plan to guide our infrastructure investments over the next twenty-five years. Mr. Pearson is going to talk to you about the process that they went through in prioritizing these areas, and hopefully you'll walk away knowing that this was a very time-consuming, but also a lot of thought was put into selecting these areas, and that these areas were not selected arbitrarily or at random. And then we'll also give you an overview of the financial impacts that this new master plan will present the community over a twenty-five-year horizon. So it's not a plan that's going to be accomplished overnight, and it's not a plan that needs to be funded overnight, but it is a plan. It is a suggestion for a roadmap to help us get to our future, and I believe that this City Council has said that it is your goal to ensure that one hundred percent of the city receives city water, sewer, and reuse at some point in the city's history. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Mr. Pearson to come to the podium, and if nothing else, this gives us a really good excuse to put Mr. Pearson in a suit and have him get a haircut, so.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. We, here today, we have our consultant with AECom, who was the lead on putting together the master plan. We also have the city's rate consultant, Jeff Dykstra with StanTech, and we're just going to tag-team on the presentation. I'm going to start it out, and then turn it over to Don Jaquila with AECom, and then Jeff Dykstra with StanTech is going to talk about the financial aspects of the master plan that we could expect. So I'll go ahead and get started here. Here's the agenda. And I'd like to give you a little background on past master plans that the city has undertaken. Usually, utilities, master planning, is a process that we use to determine all future investments needed for infrastructure that will provide for new growth, as well as address deficient and aging infrastructure. This is an intensive process, it involves city staff, engineers, financial experts, and these master plans are pretty common for most water and sewer systems that serve municipalities throughout the United States. The most recent utilities' master plan for the city of Cape Coral was completed in nineteen ninety-nine by an engineering firm named Dames &amp; Moore. That plan established future expansion areas through two thousand and twenty. In two thousand and four, MWH, or Montgomery Watson, completed the facilities' master planning report. That report allowed us to expand some of the wastewater plants and a number of other engineer, utility assets. And in two thousand and twelve, the city's master plan was updated exclusively for the Southwest Six Seven UEP project, and again, we updated it in two thousand and sixteen for the North One and Two UEP project. These interim updates that we completed were required to secure the state revolving loan funds. They made us, since the other plan had been quite a few years back, they wanted us to update it, which is what we had to do to qualify for that low-interest funding. And now, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Don Jaquila with AECom, and she will walk us through the meat of the master plan. Don?
Good afternoon. As Jeff introduced, I'm Dawn Jaquila, project manager for this project with AECom. This slide here gives you an idea of the key work tasks that were completed by AECom during this master planning effort. We were assisted by metro forecasting models, who provided population forecasts, as well as CDM, who assisted with the potable water modeling for the city system, and then also by Water Science and Associates, who completed the water resource planning. Metro forecasting model, models actually used an integrative growth model that was developed specifically for the city of Cape Coral. This model is actually a proprietary tool, where they actually compiled a lot of data relative to planning applications, building permits, COs, any commercial developments that they were aware that were pending. It also included information relative to the availability of land and infrastructure, entitlements for planned developments, et cetera. They compiled all this data and put it into the tool, and basically, they were able to forecast population for the city. What's important to note here is, not only were they able to forecast the population and the timing of that population, but they were also able to locate the growth, because they were actually tailing population on a parcel level, as well as a traffic area zone level. This slide actually shows you the utility extension program areas and a proposed schedule. If you can see that, we have numbered the UEP areas in a priority order, three through twelve, and we actually have the timing identified on this slide. Basically, we're looking to try to complete two UEP areas every five years, starting with North Three in two thousand and twenty-five and moving northward, northerly. The slide also kind of gives you an idea of the area of each UEP area proposed, and the current two thousand and twenty ERUs that are existing in these areas. You can also see two major development areas, Hudson Creek, and also the Pine Island Corridor, and the timing proposed for those developments to actually be built and needing utilities. This gives you more details on the UEPs. You can see that we're showing, again, the existing ERUs for two thousand and twenty. We're looking out, build out ERUs, we're looking at build out sometime after two thousand and eighty. The additional growth, you know, from two thousand and twenty to build out, and also looking at UEP septic density, which is a very important consideration when looking at where to expand the utilities. A lot of thought went into trying to prioritize the UEP areas, and in order to evaluate who should be connected to the system next, we looked at seven different criteria. We looked at, and you could see them across the top, from water quality, additional commercial growth, residential growth, existing population, septic tank density, constructability, and O and M cost. And they were weighted differently. We felt that water quality was important, as well as residential growth, septic tank density, all very high important criteria when evaluating how to extend the system. I want to point out on this slide, you can see that we pointed water quality for North Three as fifteen points, and zeros all the, you know, North Four on. That's not because water quality is not a concern there. The North Three area has an area that has been identified by the city already as an environmental management area, and that area is west of Burnt Store Road and south of Kismet, and so that's an area that's included in North Three. And so the city has already said, hey, you need to really look at growth, look at septic tank density, and prioritize this area for utility expansion. And actually, the city actually reports on septic tank densities in this area on an annual basis. So we actually awarded North Three fifteen bonus points, as you would, I guess you could say, to make sure that that area is given a priority that was already established as a priority area by the city. And basically, we just pointed all these areas based on these criteria, and you can see that, you know, the score is lined up with the order that we're showing now, starting out with North Three, and then going on through North Twelve. This slide was put in the slide deck because it's very important to understand how wastewater flow is going to be distributed from all the UEP areas. Basically, you can see that the blue areas, North Three and Four, are projected to flow to the southwest water reclamation facility. You see the striped area for North One, that's going to have a flow split. Basically, it starts off flowing southerly to southwest in Everest, but then eventually will flow northerly. And then, of course, all the UEP areas from North Six onward have to flow to a new north water reclamation facility. And that's just based on conveyance, wastewater conveyance system deficiencies or issues. They can't, they can't, we cannot convey flow from these northern portions of the city adequately with the existing infrastructure, so we need to build a north water reclamation facility. And basically, the North Six area triggers that north water reclamation facility construction, and we're projecting that to occur in two thousand and thirty-five. So our planning, we're doing the best to maximize the use of the existing facilities, but we just can't, once we hit North Six, that's the trigger for a new plant. The next few slides present the infrastructure needs over a twenty-year period, and basically, this is, this is all the results of what we call a gap analysis, where we look at capacity, treatment capacity, and capacity for some of the infrastructure, and look at projected demands and flows, and where there is a gap and a deficiency, then we have to expand capacities. And it's also based on hydraulic modeling of the irrigation, potable water, and wastewater systems. And so, as you can see to the right hand, you see the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four cost summary, assessed costs, are those costs that are localized to that UEP area, and it primarily are, you know, mains for the utilities that are less than ten inches in diameter, and they're there to support the local connections. Then you see non-assessed costs, and those are basically treatment capacity upgrades, pump station upgrades, major transmission mains, ten inches and above, as well as, we're showing, the utility CIP costs to maintain the existing infrastructure. And so those are all considered the non-assessed costs. And then funded by others identify costs that are possibly going to be funded by others or through other budgetary mechanisms, and actually won't be funded by the city. So in two thousand and twenty-four, you can see we're projecting that three hundred and thirty-seven million dollars is needed to basically connect North One to the utility system. Twenty twenty-five, you can see, we're planning on making sure we have utility connection for Hudson Creek, as well as Pine, the Pine Island Corridor, and we're looking at running up utilities, either, you know, you can see Alternative One up Burnt Store Road or up Old Burnt Store Road, to service that Burnt Store Road corridor. And you also see at the bottom, we're also talking about constructing a new thirty-inch force main on Veterans Parkway to be able to convey flows from these new UEP areas southerly to the existing plants. And again, you can see the itemized costs for two thousand and twenty-five, split up between assessed, non-assessed, and funded by others. Right now, we're showing some of the Hudson Creek and Pine Island Corridor improvements to be funded by others. That still has to be determined on how that actual funding is going to play out, but we have shown it funded by others right now. Here you see the two thousand and twenty-seven infrastructure needs, and similarly, here we're talking about servicing Hudson Creek Phase Two. We're looking at, you know, potable water, transmission mains, we're looking at basically a new wastewater transmission main and pump station up to Hudson Creek, and this is projected to cost about a hundred and thirteen million dollars to serve Hudson Creek. This will also, at twenty twenty-seven, will also be serving North Three, North Two, and North One. This slide presents the two thousand and thirty infrastructure needs. You could see that we're projecting about seven hundred and thirty-five million. At this point, we're going to be serving North One, North Two, North Three, North Four, and North Five. We're anticipating the need for a new east reservoir, storage tank, and transmission main. We're looking for a new irrigation canal pump station, so those are the major non-assessed costs to bring these additional areas online. And this slide actually depicts the summary of improvements through two thousand and forty, where you can see all of the infrastructure improvements. We're talking about, you know, new canal pump stations, looking at expanding the north-south transfer station ASR system. looking at expanding the north-south transfer station ASR system, looking at both potable water storage, reuse storage. Again, since this is 2040, I indicated previously that we need a four MGD north water reclamation facility. So that's shown on here. And basically, we need an eight MGD facility by 2040. In 2035, we only need a four MGD. And this final slide actually gives you a rollout of all the costs associated with the UEP program. It's divided up between assessed, non-assessed, funded by others, and total cost. And you can see the bottom line total for build out is a pretty significant number. Billion, you know, you can see it there, you know, as far as the cost per year. At this point, I'll turn it over to Jeff, and he'll talk about the city's rate consultant to talk about financing.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Jeff Dykstra with StanTech. We've served as the city's rate consultant for the utility fund. Before I go into all the detail on the slide here, I want to focus or just draw your attention and point out that when we do a rate analysis, we're really focusing on the non-assessed costs and specifically the water, sewer, and irrigation portion of those costs. Those are going to be ultimately funded by the rate payer. And so that's what's incorporated from a revenue sufficiency or a financial user rate analysis standpoint. The assessed costs are obviously handled through a different funding mechanism assessments, but really, we're talking here today about the pledged revenues by the utility fund and the rate payers. On an annual basis, the utility performs a revenue sufficiency analysis, which determines and evaluates the sufficiency of the rates to generate revenues to meet the financial requirements of the utility over not only the next budget year, but also a five- and 10-year period. In support of the master plan this year, we extended that out to a 20-year lookout. So that's why you'll see here on the screen that the financial management plan presented goes out to 2041. And so we're covering, capturing in that process the non-assessed costs of the UEP that Don just described through that time period. A lot going on here on the screen, but I do want to just spend a little bit of time talking about what it's actually presenting and, you know, telling you. A couple of, when we do a financial analysis or a rate analysis more specifically, we're really looking at a couple of key performance metrics and indicators that help determine the sustainability of the utility. One being debt service coverage. So as the utility issues debt, you have made promises to repay that debt, and you have pledged revenues by the monthly user rates to repay that debt. And so that's a metric that we look at, debt service coverage. That's important to meet so that we do not go into a default situation. Another key performance metric is reserve levels. And specifically, that graph on the top left, you see it's entitled "Operating Fund." That is a depiction of that over a 20-year forecast period. From a recommendation standpoint, we've recommended that the city maintain a target of six months of operating expenses as a reserve. I know that, you know, specific internal policies may differ from that, but from a rate consultant perspective, that's what we've presented here today and half historically. The bottom three graphs are primarily focused around the funding of the utility CIP and the non-assessed costs associated with water, sewer, and irrigation that Don presented. And so as we're looking at this, really, that's, these are just some of the metrics that we're looking at in this plan. The one that probably, the bullet point or the highlight that probably sticks out to you is that 3% annual rate increases beginning in FY '23. So based on the non-assessed costs that were presented in the previous slides as well as the utility's existing CIP, the estimated incremental operating expenses associated with the UEP, as new customers come online, you're going to have increased operating expenses. That's factored in, and as well as the use of revenue bonds primarily, to the extent cash, you know, is not available. Highly leveraging revenue bonds to fund a lot of this. And so in order to do that, we are looking at 3% annual rate increases to water, sewer, and irrigation rates to cover the funding of the UEP over the next 20 years as presented. This also assumes that the impact fees are at their current levels. Obviously, the utility looks at this every couple of years. And so that's one thing I know Jeff will talk to as well, but this assumes current impact fee levels for water, sewer, and irrigation as well. Another big takeaway here is we are meeting the, with this plan, we meet the required and recommended debt service coverage targets and unrestricted reserve levels over the forecast period. But we are issuing about $1 billion worth of debt to fund this. And that's just for the water, sewer, and irrigation projects, non-assessed portion. We then said, just to provide some perspective and to measure the impact of, let's say, we're able to increase impact fees. You know, obviously, they would have to be justified and spelled out in a study at the time when they're implemented, but just to see how increased impact fees could be used to defray some of the rate increases. So this is really a kind of a hypothetical situation, but just to provide you some perspective on the impact. And so what we've done in this scenario is to say, well, let's assuming existing impact fees for the rest of the city, but in these UEP areas that we're talking about, what happens if the impact fees were 50% higher? So starting with North Three. And as you can see, the impact on the annual rate increase is unchanged through 2031. It does offer a quarter of a percent reduction from the 3% starting in 2032 over the forecast period. It also offers the city the ability to save about $100 million worth of debt. So obviously, the impact fees have to be justified and performed based on current and local data at the time of implementation. But again, just to provide some hypothetical or perspective scenario on how that, you know, funding source could be leveraged.
Our next steps with this project will be to get council's input, have that dialogue, finalize the master plan. We'll need to hire a consultant to update the impact fees. It's been, it'll be a couple of years in the next few months since we last updated them. Now that we have the master plan, I would highly recommend that we update it because we know what the costs are. And the last item would be to, beginning in FY '23, we'll run another rate sufficiency analysis and adopt a new rate resolution next year in 2022 for beginning FY '23. And staff is ready to stand by for any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tate.
I want to make sure Councilmember Hayden doesn't want to talk first.
He didn't put his light on first.
Jeff, can you go back to the original slide with the dates?
Sure.
Okay. So while we're doing North One, millions of people, or I would say hundreds of people and thousands of people are going to be building in North Three and Eleven. And especially, I see North Three is 2025, I get that. But North Eleven is where so much is going on. And we're not going to get there until 2045. So I have a problem with the chart. I mean, is there statistics to show that that's going to be able to hold off till that? Because you know what's happening there now. And so what happens is the builders chase where utilities go. And they build the specs around it. So they're all going to go to North One next as soon as the water starts. And they're going to be allowed to build as per, we used to in the past, right? Where they can build as per water and sewer, and then they hook in when it's done?
For...
We did allow that before.
For commercial or...
No, residential. We allowed it for residential in years past. When we were putting in utilities, they could go ahead and start their product, knowing that by the time they were going to be completed, the water and sewer would be there. That kept them from building on well and septic.
Yes, I believe that has been done in the past. Isn't that correct, Paul?
Yeah, it was done in the past, and it was very productive for all the spec home builders because they knew that they could go ahead and finish. And now it's taking even longer to build a single-family home. So that would work. I want to make sure we're still going to be able to do that.
That's something we can look at. Certainly, we notify that when the UEPs are coming. So builders know, and they can make that decision whether they want to put in septic or well.
Or they want to...
Or that timing as far as when the UEP is coming in.
Right.
So certainly, when we've given notice of award for construction, and they know it's going to take two years to build that area.
Right.
They could plan on those homes going in. That's something we could coordinate with permitting.
Okay, I just want to make sure that option is still available because it was very attractive back then, and I think it would be attractive now. So again, I'm concerned that it's going to take us so long to get to the highest traffic area of construction right now, which is 2045. That's where everybody's going, and that's where the flood insurance issues are. And our city manager is actually building up in that area. So you see the growth. So you see the growth that's going to happen over there. Can you go back to that chart?
Sure.
I don't know what happened to it. So I'm really concerned about that. And then you made a comment, first of all, impact fees, the 50%, please take that off the chart. That doesn't work. You made a comment, or somebody made a comment, about a 3% increase in current users to pay for debt. Was that stated correctly? Okay, wasn't it the more users that came online, the less we would pay? And now we're saying, okay, you saved money all these years, but now we're going to charge you more so we can pay for future improvements? Did you say that, or did I misunderstand it?
Well...
I mean, you didn't say it, but in the presentation, he said it. I'm sorry, I didn't remember your name.
Also Jeff, so...
I'm sorry. Well, there you go, so Jeff.
So it's important to remember that in previous, in the utility's most recent revenue sufficiency analysis, there haven't been rate increases programmed except in last year's study. Looking out into the future, I believe it was 2.5% increases started to come into the out years. Just to address, you know, increases in operating costs, outpacing the growth outside of the UEP. Now that we've brought in the UEP, that would, what you said would be correct if you didn't have this level of capital program coming in. Now that you have capital costs of this magnitude, the growth itself isn't able to, you know, by itself sustain this level of capital costs and associated debt with it without rate increases.
Yeah, for me, that would be difficult. I don't know how everybody else feels, but for me, charging residents that have water and sewer and have paid their water and sewer and paid their impact fees and done what they've got to do, now you're going to charge them more to bring in new utilities for the rest of the city. It's just something I'd really have to think about and try to understand a little better. Maybe I don't quite get it yet, but...
Maybe I can help, Councilmember Tate. A lot of our infrastructure is south of Pine Island Road. So there's a lot of large transmission mains that we have to construct that we didn't have to construct in prior UEPs, especially south of Pine Island Road. I know North Two, we had quite a few. That was real expensive. North One's probably going to be more expensive than North Two or and/or Six Seven. So, and also, when we started Six Seven, we had already built a master pump station for Southwest Five, I believe it was. And it was to share between those two areas. So there's a lot of infrastructure that has to be put in to be able to move that flow south to our existing plants. And that's one of the reasons why in the future, we're going to have to pull the trigger by 2035 on a north wastewater plant because it's, all the infill growth is going to take up a lot of the capacity at the existing Everest and Southwest plants. So that's...
It just seems that there's got to be a way to be able to make the growth pay for the growth.
I wish there was, but there's just so much other infrastructure that's not necessarily just related to the UEP. It's getting that flow back to the plants, that transmission, moving that, and also the treatment upgrades at the plants. Right now, we're in good shape at both wastewater plants. We're only at about 50% of our capacity. Both plants are currently rated at 28.4 million gallons a day. So we're only running about 13 to 14 right now. So we've got a lot of capacity. So in order to utilize, because we've got a lot of carrying costs on those plants now that we're still paying that debt on, we want to use it. And so the only way we're going to be able to use it is put in a lot of off-site, large transmission main infrastructure, pump stations. We're going to have to drill more wells because the demands are going to slowly increase. We're going to have to put in more treatment trains at the RO plants to be able to handle, because especially when you, with the RO plants, you can't build for averages. You have to be able to build for peaks. Because that Super Bowl Sunday, when everybody flushes their toilet, you know, we have to be able to meet that peak demand.
Yeah, I understand that. It's just the city kind of gets divided. You know, the Pine Island Road corridor, everybody south of there's got utilities. Just this little portion of these citizens that have the water and sewer above it, everybody south of there has been paying for all these improvements. So now, they're going to continue to pay for everybody else's. And it just seems to me that it's a little bit unfair. I don't know. Well, I'll talk more about it, but that's what I think. Thank you.
Excuse me, if I could just add to my previous comment with that question. I want to clarify that the 3% increases that we're showing starting next year of the UEP program, the master plan, have expedited that. But in last year's revenue sufficiency analysis, even without these extended UEP areas, we were looking at in the future around fiscal year '27, having to implement some level of rate increases just for the system outside of the UEP. So it's not simply that because of the UEP, we're having all these new rate increases. That's a part of it. But just in general, the utility was looking at the likelihood of needing rate increases kind of within the next five to 10 years anyway.
So five to 10 years is a lot different than next year. So that's why...
I understand. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I get that. It's just a lot different. So, okay, thanks.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you. My light was on because I wanted to elaborate further on Councilmember Tate's question concerning allowing residential builders to build in areas where utilities are anticipated to come within a certain timeframe. And it has been the city's practice, and I don't believe it's changed, to allow that to happen provided the property owner or builder signs a hold harmless that basically acknowledges, they're assuming the risk that the utilities will be there when it's done. And if it's not there, then they're going to be faced with the fact that they will not be receiving a CO unless they either then put in septic or they put in, you know, or we put in the utility. So it's something that has been allowed within a certain timeframe at their risk.
Right, thank you. I just remember that because as some people were selling off lots, builders were picking them up quick, quick. Then they'd hold them, they'd know what the timeframe was to build. They would quickly get in there. So it works to our advantage if we can work with the builders. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayden.
Jeff, how certain are we on these proposed dates? I know there's a lot of factors that come into play. And I don't even know what our analysis showed on why we picked these particular dates. I know as we build one UEP area, we may be designing another and moving forward in that way. But how certain or comfortable or confident are we in these dates?
Councilmember Hayden, when we first started the master plan and in the past historical... and in the past historical operations, what we've done is usually about every five years. But I know there has been the desire, I've heard from council, that you wanted to accelerate it. So what we did was we cut that in half from five to two and a half. So basically, beginning in, and I've talked to Paul, what he was planning on doing was, after you bless this, go ahead and pull the trigger on starting engineering design and permitting on North Three. And while North One is finishing up and beginning construction, we're already designing North Three and then put it out for bid and be done with that by 2025. So this is a very highly accelerated process. And, but I don't think we could do it any quicker than every two and a half years.
Okay, I just want to make sure we weren't being conservative at all. If, you know, 2045 could become 2040, or 2045 could become 2050. But you're analyzing this as an aggressive plan.
Yes, yes, sir.
Right now.
Highly aggressive, without going in and tearing up the whole city. I mean, certainly, is that theoretically possible? Absolutely. But we would, you know, have everything torn up.
Yeah. I guess I disagree a little bit with Councilmember Tate on the rate increases because we haven't had one for a while. And the last one we did, there was probably a time when those living in the north were probably paying for things at plants or treatment facilities that we build in the south. So I think the entire community shares in what this means for us, for development, for commercial growth, for parks, for anything. You know, I think all residents will be able to take advantage of things that may happen in north, in the north besides the houses that will be there. You know, of course, we don't like to see the rate increases happen that soon. But I think in terms of what we're trying to accomplish and what the end result is going to be, that's important at this point.
Absolutely. And as we're all noticing, going to the grocery store or the gas station, everything's getting more and more expensive. Our chemicals are going up. We're seeing just about everything, you know, increasing because of, you know, some of that probably has to do with supply chain issues and whatnot. But, you know, it's, so far, I mean, it's incredible that we were able to keep rates at flat. And even we actually lowered rates by 3% in 2014 and in FY14 and have kept them at zero for this period of time. It's an incredible feat that we've been able to do it. But there comes a time when, no matter what we do, how good we are, everything that we try to find where we can save money and be more efficient, we just, inflation takes over and outpaces that.
And looking at 24 years out in terms of what global warming might mean, what climate change might be, I mean, will construction standards change because of resiliency efforts moving forward with some of these projects? Maybe not the ones that happen in the next five or 10 years. But moving forward, are we going to have to look at a different way we design these projects?
Councilmember, I would imagine so, especially with sea level rise. And I, you know, placement of lift stations at a certain elevation to withstand a certain level of storm events. You know, that could change. I could see that probably changing over time. Certainly advances, like with our RO membranes. There's a lot of research going on right now on how they can improve that technology to where, because right now, the saltier the water, the groundwater is, the more energy it costs us to force that water through the membranes and get the clean water out. So there's a lot of research going on in that arena that I see that. Because our groundwater is not, we're mining that water. There's not an unlimited supply of the exact same fresh water that we have in the ground now. Over time, the chlorides, the salt, if you will, and minerals are going to increase. Well, as that happens, I can foresee that the membrane technology will improve and that rate of recovery, because right now, we get about 80% recovery from our membranes. The other 20% is the brine, the concentrate that we dispose of down the deep injection wells. So as that happens, we want to keep that 80 and maybe even higher recovery rate. But with that, you know, I'm hoping that that technology will continue to improve and we'll, you know, be able to continue keeping the costs down because we've got an incredible system here. Cape Coral is the envy of everyone I know. And, you know, the system we have, we have a system of total water management here. We keep water from going out into the estuaries because too much freshwater can be bad. We store that water. We use that water. We recycle that same water. We take groundwater that is not even considered drinking water. You couldn't even give it to your animals in its raw form. And we turn that into good tasting drinking water. And so we are completely an alternative water supply city. And it is just an incredible program, and we want to continue that progress that we've made so far.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I take a look at this chart, and a few things come to mind. You know, I guess, I think when you look at the priority matrix that you put together, I know that one of our priorities here in our city is the commercial growth aspect of it. And you could go back to the other page, please.
Sorry.
That's okay. You know, so that is one area that I look at when you look at the priority matrix. You know, we all sit here and preach, and year after year is we want to enhance our commercial development. So in order to do that, you have to recognize where some of that development potential is and make sure that you put that water and sewer in that direction. When you look at your priority matrix, you know, there's many aspects of that, of that matrix. One aspect is the commercial growth, residential growth, existing populations, septic tank density, constructability. So I think there's many aspects when you try to average that out. For me, one of the, one of the visions that I see for our city is to increase that commercial growth when you can. And also, I think the other thing that you have to take a look at this is the economics and try to find out, when you make a decision, what type of return investment are you going to get? And the reason that I mention that, you take North 11 that Councilmember Tate discussed earlier, you know, that's probably one of the, between three and 11, that's all basically golf access areas. And that's going to be your higher value homes. Now, when you look down at the residential units in North 11, I guess that's 791 that you have. Is that what that...
Yeah, that's the current number of equivalent residential units, 791. Yes, sir.
So some people would say, well, there's not enough houses there that may not accommodate that. Where I guess I look at it a little differently. I look at it that there's 791 homes in that area now. I guarantee you, when you put water and sewer in, that area is going to explode. So we're going to get an additional tax base there. Versus if you go and say, North Six, they already have 2,239. How much extra development is going to occur in that area? So that's kind of how I look at it. You know, you have an area that's golf access. You have an area that has minimal amount of houses. But if you go up in the North Two, where it was just completed now, there's not a street you can't drive down that you can't see three to five houses under construction, no matter where you drive there. It's exploding. And the reason being is because of water and sewer. And, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've heard people say, you know, when you're getting your criteria together as far as where they want to build in the city, just about always, the top, one of the top things is water and sewer. Does it have water and sewer? If the answer's no, then they say, well, point me in the direction where there is water and sewer. So for me, I think the Burnt Store corridor is extremely important commercially. So I think that we have to try to make sure that we get up that quarter as quick as we can. And I think North Three and North 11, because of the return on investment with the golf access homes that are going to be built there, we're going to get the most return in that area. So when I look at this map, that's kind of what jumps out at me that I think we're missing. I think North Three, we got that on the list. I think, I think that we're falling short as far as the potential in the North 11, as far as that growth. And also, that's going to help the commercial growth on Burnt Store up in that area there. So I would look at it where you take a look at the Burnt Store corridor in West. The Pine Island corridor that you have noted there, that's important. We got to get that wrapped up. But that's, you know, already noted in there for 2024 and '25. So that's what, when I look at this map, that's the concern that I have is I think, I think we need to go in that North 11 area because we're going to get a large return on investment. And I think if we can get all the way up Burnt Store corridor, that's going to open up a lot of opportunities for commercial growth. So I think it's helping us on each end of the spectrum when you look at it in that fashion. You know, the rest, as far as the rates, you know, I wish we could sit here and say, just the rate payers in these areas will be affected by the future growth in the city. I don't, I don't think that's going to happen, probably. Look at some of the other assessments that we do here in the city. It's across the board. So I think that we're going to have to invest in infrastructure as far as our plants or water lines, excuse me. And that's going to take money. So I think that to put all that burden on one area, I think would be difficult. So I think, you know, this is definitely a start. It looks like an aggressive plan. One of the things that I said all along was, in the past, you know, we design an area, we do the construction, and when we're done, we kind of go, phew, well, I'm glad that's over. And then there's a period of time, year or two goes by. And then we go, okay, let's start designing the next UEP. And that's an 18-month process or whatever it is. So then, next thing you know, you realize you got three to five years between projects. Doesn't sound like that is the case here. So I'm glad to see that type of effort being put forth because, you know, I think as quickly as we can get the infrastructure in place for water and sewer, that's just going to help the growth in each one of those areas. It's going to grow exponentially as soon as we're done. And I think you have to look at these areas and find out where we're going to get the biggest return on investment. That's why I think the Burnt Store, North Three, 11, and the two areas that you have noted in orange would be my preference moving forward because of that. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Tate and the mayor. I think a lot of his points echo mine. Obviously, you guys are looking in the right direction with regards to prioritizing North Three. It's a need at this point, and it's only going to continue to increase in density. You know, as far as the commercial, the commercial corridor, I think prioritizing that and pushing that upwards is indicative of the fact that you know that it's going to go farther north than Kismet. And so assuming that that's there to be utilized by commercial, the commercial is going to follow the density. So I think if you're wanting that to be utilized farther north on Burnt Store, we're going to need to prioritize North 11, I would imagine, far sooner than 2045. I would imagine that we'll be back, if we keep it at 2045, before the next, what is it, 10 years every time we do the master concept plan, to shift that around because I don't think there's any stop in that growth. And it's going to become a need quicker than we'd imagine. And not to mention, I think also, to put that into perspective, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a little bit cheaper to bring utilities out to areas that are less developed with regards to not having to, I guess, tear up existing frontages, easements, things like that. Is that correct?
I'm sorry.
So if there's less homes there, it's a little conceivably cheaper to bring utilities to that area?
Yes, yes, it would be.
From a cost standpoint?
Yes, because you're not tearing up existing driveways and existing infrastructure.
Okay, great. Because historically, obviously, you say, well, we look at the density, and that means that it's already there. And of course, you don't want to build it in the desert, right? But like the mayor said, you know, and Councilmember Tate, it's quickly expanding to the point where if we wait till 2045, it's going to be, I think, a situation where we are going to be fighting a significant increase in cost because the density is going to be to a point where it's going to be far more expensive than if we were to prioritize that a little sooner than 2045.
I'd like to show you, go back to this slide for the 2025 infrastructure needs. We have been working with Hudson Creek to put in the backbone transmission lines for this. So certainly, in the future, and I would recommend probably at least every five to 10 years that we revisit this master plan because I can guarantee you it will change. And it's really a living document that we want to update as we move forward in time because we can't always, you know, have that crystal ball and know exactly where everything's, what's going to happen. So what we plan on doing here is putting in water, sewer, and irrigation lines, working with Hudson Creek. We're working actually on an agreement now with them where they would put in this backbone transmission infrastructure real soon, is what Carl told me earlier before the meeting. And then, once we have that, that's going to be key to up in the north and all the way to our city limits and actually tie into and take over the myriad RV park that's currently being served through the Charlotte County facilities on Burnt Store. And actually taking those customers back, serving them, and being able to serve that entire, both sides, east and west, the Burnt Store corridor. And once that occurs and we have that infrastructure in place that Hudson Creek puts in, the developer, that's going to open that up completely. I mean, because if a developer's interested in developing a larger area over there, it would just be a short main extension, and they've got water, sewer, and irrigation, and they're good to go.
Sure.
So, but certainly, we can look at, if there's a desire for us, you know, to go back, but I want to caution that if we jump over other areas that we've already programmed in, because there's a lot of work in the hydraulic modeling and where everything's, the flows are going to go. If we jump over an area, you know, we may be tearing up an area that we're not in yet and then have to go back and tear it up again to put in the utility. So that's why we wanted that organic type growth where we're starting and we're just, we're moving up north. Because we've already got that base infrastructure already in place. We just tie right into those mains.
Sure. Okay, I guess just a follow-up on that. I know and I understand it's a breathing doctor and a living document, you said, and it's likely that that's, could potentially change. But the reality is, until that point, if we leave it at the 2045, that's going to be the master concept plan. It's going to show 2045. So to the mayor's point, that might curtail any potential growth. When people look, not knowing what you might know, which is, hey, look, this is probably going to change. Well, they don't know that. They look, they say, oh, 2045, they look elsewhere. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to, every year, UEP needs to look at the densities of each area as far as the septic. And so that goes DEP. Just wanted to point out, you can see North 11 has a .38. So it's very low right now.
Correct.
And you can see Four, Five, North Four, Five, and Six, those are higher. So we have to weigh that, too. So Jeff just explained, you know, we're going to be going up Burnt Store Road with utilities for the com-
So Jeff just explained, you know, we're going to be going up Burnt Store Road with utilities for the commercial. Certainly, we could look at North Eleven, but we have to keep in mind that we have to service those areas where the septics, the density starts to increase. So that's what the... Well, it's important as far as through DEP, we're required when it's, you know, it starts to get over 30, 35% as far as the septic and potential septic failure and water quality. So that's part of that. And then, as Councilmember Long said, you try to balance, certainly. You like to come in, you don't want the, the, to be 50% developed. Then you have to deal with more driveways and the costs potentially go up. So, so that balance. So we can certainly, I guess, take a look at, we're hearing that possibly North Eleven may be a priority, you know, after Three. And we can certainly look at that. And the other thing with the model is squeezing that down through the infrastructure because that would have to get down to the existing plant.
Sure. I think counter to that point, though, you could say, currently, yeah, the density's lower. But if you were to wait till 2045, that the density would far surpass anything on this map. And then you counter that with the fact that you did in North Three prioritize to a significant advantage, I think to about 15 points, counter to zero for the rest of these areas, the water quality issues. And so that same, for that same region and that same spreader is impacted in almost every parcel in North Eleven with regards to water. So I would argue that even half of this, without the context of that quality, that water quality 15 points, we don't have that attributed on this chart here. Do you understand where I'm going with that?
Understood, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cosdine.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I can see the logic on expediting North Eleven, but I don't think that decision needs to be made tonight. I think it's a living document, like you said, and the matrix, the data on the matrix is going to change every year, right? These numbers change, so it doesn't make sense to be pushing, I think, right now for, to change from, from 2045 to any other year at this point for North Eleven. I don't think so. Jeff said that utilities are going to be going up Burnt Store Road. So if we're talking about development, if we're concerned about development, that's where it's going to be, I imagine, generally speaking. So I don't think that's a good reason to be pushing for North Eleven to be sooner. But I have a question unrelated to that about the map. Can you bring up the map of the UEP areas?
Sure.
So I can't tell under North Twelve and Eight, but it looks like Gator Circle is basically split. Is that right?
Don? There is a, there's a line there, but that's...
I think that's Gator Slough.
Yeah, that's Gator Slough.
So I can't tell where North Twelve ends and North Eight starts. But my question is, was there thought given to the fact that you're splitting up a, basically, one giant neighborhood? And could, North Twelve only has 470 ERUs at this point. So would it make sense to add that into Eight?
Yeah, we could certainly, you know, in the, just like with North Two, we actually expanded the boundaries up to the Bonefish and the Seven Islands. That actually, in our original plan, we didn't have that. So, you know, it's, it's a fluid document. It's not, you know, felt, you know, we do the best we can with trying to use man-made or natural boundaries, such as like canals or, you know, the, the sea or whatever. You know, we try to use those the best we can to delineate. But I, I want to say that I think it's important to note that it's not set in stone, that exact boundary. It's just something that we came up with, with the consultant, to delineate that based on population and other factors and the area. And the, we tried to keep it, if you can see the area square miles, we tried to keep it around two to three square miles for each area. So they weren't these giant areas like we had with North Two. Of course, North Eleven's a little bit higher because it's such a big area with low density.
Now, but not necessarily in the future, so I was just going to bring that up next. Might North Eleven split off into two areas, you know, as the density grows?
Possibly. We may do similar to what we're doing in North One, North Eleven, A, B, but we could look at that. And certainly, one thing on here is you can see the square miles. North Eleven's a bigger area, but it has some large parcels. There's less roads, so there's less utilities. And to go back to your other question, you're saying as far as North Twelve and North Eight, that, that split is Gator Slough? So typically, like Jeff was saying, that we design the areas and the control for it is the gravity sewer. And that's by major road and canals. So with Gator Slough slipping, going right through there, that's why you have North Eight and North Twelve.
North Twelve would be a very small area, I guess, because a lot of that is just completely undeveloped land, right? It'll be the smallest area. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at this map, I, I agree with the progression that you guys have set, set forth. I can, I could see the reasoning to push North Eleven higher, but I don't really see it pushing it right after North Three. I know there's going to be commercial growth on the Burnt Store Road corridor, but there are lots of homes in North Four that have been, you know, waiting for this. You know, they're going to see it, they already seen it next to them, around them, and they're going to be excited for it. So I like that Hudson Creek is willing to put lines in and stuff like that, but I really don't want to see Eleven go before Four. And obviously, as you said, it's a living document. So maybe we can move Eleven up somewhere between Six and Seven, but there's a lot of already developed communities here that are waiting for water and sewer, and they're expecting it. So to just jump because that's where the hot real estate market is, I don't see it as being a really good reason to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Tate.
It wasn't the hot real estate market. It was just a lot of other factors. But when I look at this, I don't see it the way you see it because you have all the experience. But let me just, so you remember when we did 18 square miles? Does anyone remember that back in the eighties, and the whole city looked like it was an A-bomb? And so then, when we did it, we progressively did it. So this side was under construction, then another area was under construction, but nobody was under construction at all one time. So now, if you look at this, in 2045, you're going to have North Eleven, you're going to have North Ten, and you're going to have North Twelve. So three areas of the city are all going to be torn up. So I don't know about mains and lines and all that stuff, but it just seems to me like, from a layperson's, stupid person's point of view, if you're working in like North Ten, Six, and Five, that's an area where people will be able to get in and out of their homes. They'll be able to deal with it, be done with it, and move on. Then you go to the next area, but now you've got these three areas sporadically under construction. Does it make any sense to what I'm saying?
Yes, absolutely.
I understand that for you, there must be a whole bunch of other reasons. But for me, it just seems like the city's going to be torn up in all these different areas all the time because there's nothing seamless and consistent. Like before, we did Fifty-Eight and Fifty-Nine, you knew that was under construction. Six and Seven, you knew that was under construction. But then how do you know that this one, this one, and now in the northeast corner, the northwest corner, and in the middle were under construction? It just seems like a nightmare to me. Not just as a Realtor, but as a homeowner, as a person, you know. And, and to the other point, North Eleven, the lot values are much higher. They'll be able to handle the assessment compared to North, the other, the lower, North Six, North Ten. Those are much lower value lots. So, you know, you look at it, not only new construction and not only commercial, but also much higher value lots. And my last question is, if you're going up Burnt Store, let's say you're in 2025, do both sides of the road get utilities, water and sewer, or just the side on 2025, the west side? And then the east side gets it in 2030 or 2035?
Well, it would be both sides, east and west of Burnt Store Road.
Under which one? So if I'm at North Three in 2025, do both sides of the road on Burnt Store get it all the way up to Kismet?
They would have that capability, yes.
That capability, okay.
Because we'll have major transmission mains that, that I showed on that Hudson Creek map. Those are going to be going up Burnt Store Road.
So just looking at this, 10 years apart, you're going to be ripping up Burnt Store Road because 2025, Burnt Store Road, North Three, and then 10 years later, 2035, you're going to be ripping up the other side of Burnt Store Road. So Burnt Store Road is constantly going to be ripped up over 10 years.
Well, we're not planning on, we actually put in sleeves under the road to where we don't have to tear up the road.
But you're going to be under construction.
There will be construction.
That's what I'm saying. So within a 10-year period, both sides of that road, where we're going to have lots of commercial, lots of construction, that's all going to be torn up. So again, it just goes back to the simplicity of it. I'll shut up for now.
Yeah, just a quick question. UE, the UEP Two that we just finished, how many square miles was that?
Like six? Maybe six or seven?
Okay. And the reason that I ask that question, you know, when you look at all the area square miles on every one of these areas from Three all the way up to, you know, to Twelve, you know, they're all two and a half, three. So when you look at North Eleven, and it's 6.13, that right there tells me that's probably going to be Eleven A and Eleven B UEP area, in my opinion. We've already, you know, hopefully learned something from the North Two project that it was probably, you know, a little too large. So with that being said, when you look at North Eleven, I think you can almost guarantee that that, that project will probably be split in half. You know, I, I know that everyone out there looks at this many different ways, especially, none of us up here are engineers, you know. So when we think about a pipe going from here to here, we don't really know what's involved. That's your job. I think we look at many other different facets when it, when it comes to trying to make a decision. And like I said, one of mine is economics and a return on investments. That's why I feel North Eleven is important. You know, maybe we divide that in two, and you, maybe we do Eleven A, which would probably be the most southern portion of that, of that area first. And then maybe go to North Four. I don't know, but I do believe that we'll probably divide that, that particular area up into two different projects. You know, I think with the, the values, and if you look at it economically and the potential as far as the tax base that you're going to generate there, I think it's going to be probably one of the highest areas out of all 12 that's going to provide a higher tax base for us. So that's, and also commercially, like I, like I mentioned before. So that, that's kind of why I said North Eleven just kind of jumps out at me personally.
Councilmember Hayden.
Since there seems to be some consensus for moving North Eleven up sooner, is there an opportunity with the mainline construction that Hudson Creek wants to do to piggyback off of that and, and move Eleven up sooner? Because we know we're going to be putting in lines there. And if we did Eleven A or Eleven B thing, could we take a portion of it where we anticipate high growth and maybe use that opportunity to move Eleven up?
We could, but it, the, we'll have to look at it. It could impact the timing of the rest of the plan that we have it presented today because of the fact that we're, it, it could trigger a plan upgrade sooner or, or a large diameter force main to be able to move those flows down south at, you know, early. Because we had envisioned North Eleven would tie into the new water reclamation facility, which is not built yet. So that's going to impact potentially some of your southern areas that have the higher density, that can support the cost of the infrastructure and be able to support, because with the system, I have to keep the chlorine residual at a minimum level at all times. And if we drop below that level because there's not enough water flowing to the system, we're going to get a fine. We're going to get fined from DEP. It can cause our infrastructure to actually deteriorate, our force mains because of the sewer gases. So there's a lot of, from an operational standpoint, if you don't have at least, I would not recommend less than high twenties, low 30% existing residents and commercial businesses there before you even put the infrastructure in to, to be able to support it, to sustain the system itself.
Hudson Creek is tying into existing facilities?
Sorry?
Hudson Creek will tie into existing facilities?
No, sir. They're going to have to, they're actually, our plan is, they're going to build our backbone infrastructure for the entire Burnt Store corridor.
Okay.
Maybe except for the piece above that green master pump station. There's going to be a portion of it there that we were planning on that would be part of the capital improvement program outside of an assessment.
If I could just add to Jeff. Basically, what, with Jeff, if you look at this, is when North Three comes online, we have to build that force main down Veterans so that flow will get down to the plant. So you could certainly, we could look at, you know, if you do North Three and North Four, that was heading south. And North Five was basically splitting. So if you do North Eleven, which was going to head towards the new plant someday, is that infrastructure in North Three has to get bigger to get that down through, and then potentially that Veterans force main gets larger. So, so the, the logic behind the areas is, you know, based on the metrics, and a big part of that is the constructability. So we could certainly look at that and, and see what that impact would be. But physically, you can see getting from the north end of North Eleven, that wastewater getting all the way down to the south. So we'd have to look at the hydraulics.
I know it's a working document, and things will probably change over the, over the years, but, you know, it sounds like you've been given some ideas, some thoughts about, you know, is there a way to change the order of some of these? So, so thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson, are you there?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I am. I agree with what's been said, and I do agree that this plan needs to be updated and looked at every five years as our community changes and grows. I also concur with the interest in Eleven because of the commercial corridor and the need for commercial in our city. So I concur with what's been said previously. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosdine.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think I heard you say, Paul, that to move North Eleven up, it might take away from other areas.
Well, there's the flow side of it.
Right.
But there's also the capacity of the force mains. So, yes, we would look at this every five years, but if North Eleven is going to come after North Three, I need to, we need to know that because I need to make the force mains bigger to anticipate the North Eleven flow. Right now, North Eleven is planned to go to the new plant. So we would need to, we couldn't wait for North Three to get completed to make a decision on North Eleven. We need to know that because I need to put in bigger mains. So that's something we could look at to see if we can physically do North Eleven after North Three and how that would get to the plant.
But my question is, if we do that, then we are shelving or putting off, I think it was North Five or Six or whatever that was going to be next, right?
Correct. And that's where the densities of, if North Eleven becomes a priority over North Four, then, you know, Five and Six.
I'm not okay with that because we're then doing construction to serve empty lots rather than houses with people that live there and want water and sewer, people that have been waiting and expecting it for years. So I would not be in favor of doing that just in the name of development. I think that would be a foolish move. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, what I'm hearing from Mr. Klingon is that the cost is going to be more on this now, and when we're talking about increase, rate increases happening and being concerned about rate increases, I, I think getting more people online to help with those rate increases stay lower is better. So if we can put two, two thousand more residents in North Four, paying a water bill instead of seven hundred in North Eleven, I would prefer that so that our rate increases for those of us south of Pine Island Road don't go up five, six, seven, eight percent just to pay for water and sewer in a potential area. I do see a lot of growth going on on the water in North Eleven. I see more people buying lots off water in North Four. So just to service people who are on direct access canals, I don't see it as a priority over North Three, which there's homes built both on the water and off the water. So like I said, I, I don't mind moving North Eleven up a little bit, or if we had a North Eleven A, where it may, might go up to where the Hudson Creek development is. It could, it could serve for a good purpose there, but I really do see the need to keep Four and Five where they're at because I certainly don't want to pay for a third RO plant when we don't have the need for it. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
I'm for expediting moving up Burnstour Road because of higher-end housing that would be built on all them waterfront properties, plus the commercial availability that we would have. Yeah, I am concerned with the people in the other areas where it's more densely populated that, that would like to have water and sewer, but at the same time, we have to furnish them residents with, with job opportunities. So we need to move the water and sewer where it will create more jobs. So we have to get the water and sewer in where we have available commercial properties that, you know, can someday be jobs, you know? We have to push for commercial, and that the commercial base will help everyone, you know? So we have to look at all the variables, not, not just the privilege of having water and sewer, but where the water and sewer will benefit the entire city as a whole with the biggest impact. And I believe the biggest impact would be to continue up Burnstour Road. Thank you.
Thanks. And Mr. City Manager, it does sound like we probably would need some more additional information from staff before we could even make a decision like that or even entertain a decision like that. Because, you know, we've heard staff mention larger lines and capacity and flows. So I think, you know, even before we could give staff the ultimate direction that I think you're looking for, it probably would be advantageous to have that additional information in a future meeting so we can, we can make a good informed decision. Because there could be some variables that we're not taking into consideration.
I, I think what I'm hearing, Mr. Mayor, is that you want us to take a look at the possibility of resequencing these U E P areas after U E P Three. It seems to be widespread agreement that North Three should, should be next in the queue. And then after that, you want us to look at what could the possibilities be if we resequence those areas to perhaps move up North Eleven? And so it's going to include, you know, all these things that you mentioned, you know, what impact does it have on the, the sizing of the pipes? What impact does it have on, on triggering the, the, the construction of the north water reclamation facility? So I'm hearing that that's what you're asking us to do, and so we're going to go back and, and huddle with our consultants to find out, you know, what does that look like? And how much longer will it delay us in having this strategy to move forward? But at least if I can get, again, I'm hearing that we're okay with North Three. We can at least put that to, to, to rest and, and can start working on that. But then knowing that we owe you some additional information so you can determine whether the rest of the city needs to be resequenced.
Yeah, I believe so, and it sounds like that staff needs some additional guidance also because I think everybody's on board with, with North Three, but before we even start North Three, if that's going to be our next step, it sounded to me that staff needed that information.
Correct. And I'll just, we were just kind of huddling, and, and certainly, when you, when you put in the mains, you put them in anticipation of buildup. So certainly, there, there might be a chance we'd have to look at the flows that potentially with the, with the force main down Veterans and everything, we might be able to maintain that size, but the phasing of North Eleven versus Three and what that growth potential is. And then someday, we're still going to have valves, and basically, North Eleven could go to the plant. So we need a little more engineering to, to, to look at all that.
Thank you.
May I ask a question of staff, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And so with this new assignment that we've gotten from, from, from City Council, how long do you think it will take us to sit down with our consultants to go through this exercise of estimating, you know, the scope of work and the magnitude?
I heard by Friday.
By Friday, yes.
Oh, we have Don and Ron here. Ron, what do you?
We're talking six months, are we talking a year?
Well, not a year, not, not six months, but I think several months.
Several months.
That's good.
At least three.
So at least three. And the reason I'm asking that question is because I know with you, with North Three right around the corner, that you need to start working on certain things to be able to pull that off.
I have to get an engineer on board, and that takes, that takes three to four to five, six months, you know, to get someone on board. And certainly is, is part of that, as long as we know what we need to do by the time we actually have to design North Three and what the sizes are. So, so if, so if a couple months, two to three months, certainly we'll have more information on North Eleven. That's more than enough time to coordinate with North Three.
Okay.
Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, I just had one poppin' thought when Councilmember Shepherd was mentioning commercial development. When Hudson Creek is finished, you said that that brings the water main line all the way down from Hudson Creek to all the way down Burnstour Road, correct? So there would be a water main in, in effect there?
Yes. Here's a depiction. It would tie into some existing large flow mains that we already have that were built with North Two. And there's already a main that's where the, the elbow of the blue line is down to that green line. There's already a main there as well. So.
So, as I remember on Pine Island Road, we had some commercial development that was coming in, and there wasn't city water and sewer. And the city was able to work with them about connecting from the line to the commercial development and actually offer them incentives on that. So with that main being completed online at twenty-five to twenty-seven, any commercial development basically from Hudson Creek South would be able to potentially purchase the water to connect to their commercial facility.
Yes, they would.
And then be paid back by other people as they start connecting in, so.
Yeah, in lieu of an assessment, they would pay the C I A C, which is Contribution in Aid of Construction, which is basically the, because they were not included in an assessment necessarily. If an assessment has not been, resolution has not been adopted, then they get charged to the C I A C. And then when an assessment comes, they're left out of the assessment because they've already paid their, essentially, their assessment through the C I A C.
Yeah.
And everyone pays the impact fee.
So not jumping straight to North Eleven, we're, we're not really taking away from potential commercial growth on, on Burnstour Road is the point I was trying to make. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, I don't see any other discussion. Mr. City Manager, you get the direction that you're looking for this evening?
Yes, sir. I'm here, I think, just to recap, I, I think we, we understand what you want us to do, and so we'll come back to seeing, like, another three possibilities.
Okay. Thank you. And thanks, staff, and everyone that came tonight and participated in the discussion.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item five is roundtable discussions. I don't see anything listed. Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple weeks ago, I asked council for their opinion on looking at the boat parking and trailer parking ordinance. And at that time, I told them, I was, I was looking for a second, I'm working on it, and I was recommended to look into what happened in the past and reach out to the community. After that meeting, I received several positive, only positive emails from people congratulating and hoping that I can move further on this. So what I want to ask again, and I will probably continue to ask every month or two, is for someone to second me on maybe looking into this in the future, for, only for discussion purposes.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosdine?
Could you please state very specifically what you want to look at?
So right now, I had it those few weeks ago. I don't have it with me today. There is one specific code that refers to boat trailers and where they can be parked and how many. And also, there is one specific code relating to pop-up trailers. So what I had mentioned is I don't really see the difference between a thirty-foot boat parked behind someone's house with a ten-foot platform on it as maybe a pole behind trailer, camper trailer. You know, people are here because we're a preeminent boating community, but we also have a bunch of parks now, and people do like to travel to the middle of the state, and they want to be able to pull their camper behind them. So I'm not asking to look into anything as far as motorized campers. I'm not asking to look at anything as far as large sizes, but maybe look into the code to see where we can keep, maybe keep it to where they have to be behind a fence, or just work and look through other communities and how they've handled it. Because Cape Coral is growing, and I think we should be fair that if you can park a boat, you can park a, a well-maintained trailer. You know, there are rules and regulations. You have to keep the, the grass mowed, you have to do this and that, and I just want to work on that code with staff, and just looking for someone to allow me to do that.
Thank you for clarifying.
Mayor Maske?
Yes, Councilmember Nelson, go ahead.
Thank you. I think the issue, Councilmember Welsh, at least for me, I can't speak for our other teammates, but I think the issue for me is where do you draw the line? So we had a very lively discussion a year and a half ago or so when the mayor, at that, at that time, council, council member brought this forward, and it's where do you draw the line? We talked about car covers. We talked about, you know, allowing vehicles in the driveway with a car cover on top of it. But it's hard to justify what is appropriate because what may be appropriate for me may not be appropriate for you or for my neighbor. So I just caution you with this only because a well-maintained trailer could mean something to you, but it may not mean the same thing to me. And we could put things, we could get really detailed, but I just think, again, enforcement would be a challenge with that because, you know, that would involve individuals, like where the car covers were concerned, you know, code enforcement having to lift up car covers if somebody complains, and that's, you know, that's a violation of privacy. So I just, at this time, I'm just not comfortable with bringing it forward because, again, I feel like we did our due diligence a year and a half ago when it came before us. And again, it's, it's just being able to decide what is, you know, one, one man's trash is another treasure. What, what, what is pretty to you may not be pretty to me. So that, that's my only concern with this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I, I have to agree. I know we, you know, just looked at this about eighteen months ago and, and went through this whole process. You know, I know you asked a couple weeks ago for a second, and it, no one gave you a second at that time, so I don't know where tonight will go, but I, I just think that, you know, we've addressed this issue within the last eighteen months. I know there was a lot of staff time. The city's attorney's office was involved. There was some compromise during this process. There were some things that I think that, direction that some of us that was on council at the time wanted to go in, but there was a compromise, and, and collectively, we, we came up with what we thought was the best plan at that time. So, you know, I'm not in favor of revisiting it now, only been eighteen months since we've had that discussion, but I'll, you know, leave it open for this council to see if you get a second. And it doesn't appear that.
Well, I know the, the median age of this council lowered quite a bit after this last election, so just be prepared for me to bring this up, probably once a month at every Cal meeting until I can maybe get a second. I'm not asking us to take a lot of time. I know it used to be that a council member could work on an ordinance without a second, so I don't really think I'm asking for much other than someone to allow me to start working on something. If I bring something forward at a Cal or even before a Cal, and we all see it on an agenda and we read it, and everyone doesn't like it, we can certainly kill it there. But to kill it now before I've even had a chance to start or work on it, I think is very unfair, and I am urging at least maybe one council member to agree with me that holding a, a person back from trying to look at something is not how we should be governing.
Okay. All right. With that being said, any other roundtable discussions?
I have one. Are we going to talk about the O C L B in the future?
Yes, that's scheduled to come back before you at your December Cal.
Thank you.
Okay. So no other roundtable discussions, time and place of future meetings? We have a regular meeting at the Cape Coral City Council, scheduled for Wednesday, November seventeenth, at four thirty P M. here in council chambers. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
All in favor, say aye.
Don't move.
Aye, any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Jeff, can I?